Good afternoon, everybody. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that is located on Treaty Six territory. Maintaining Nation Region Number Four. These are the traditional territories and ancestral lands of indigenous peoples, including Plains Cree nations, Senewatchee, Winawak, Rocky Mountain First Nations, Stony, Sutina, Dakota, Desilene, Sodo, Mountain Chief, the Chief, and many other communities that continue to interact with the land which the town of Hinton was established. With this settlement, I'd like to call this meeting to order of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Council adoption of the agenda, council in additions or deletions to second news agenda. And so Taylor?
Yeah, I was wondering if it was appropriate to add the RCMP financial report. As an urgent matter because they seek the signature of the mayor. Seems timely. I don't want to talk about the report per se, the detailed reporting, that would be appropriate. I only want to talk about how council would wish to dispose of the report in the future, like whether you just want the mayor to sign it or whether we want to brought back at some date, roughly what date that would be to talk about it.
Okay.
If I could, sir, administration would request the the ability to maybe bring this to a future meeting of the community as a whole. There is my understanding is there's not a timeline from the RCMP on this. The mayor and I spoke earlier in the day on a couple of questions, which unfortunately I can't, I can't provide the answers to it. I'm trying to secure that information and I would like to bring that back as an agenda item. There was a request from councillor Taylor earlier today, get on whether this is a public document or not, and I don't have that answer yet. But my hope is once confirmed, which I believe it should be a public document, then I can bring it to the next meeting of the committee in the whole and the other questions I've asked of our manager protective services can be can be available as well for discussion.
Thank you.
Perfect, the matter's resolved.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Taylor, any other deletions or additions to tonight's agenda, please? Administration?
Nothing, sir.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to. We could move to the document agenda, council of large.
Move to accept the agenda for the committee of the whole for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? All question, all those in favor? And that is fast. All right, citizens minute with council. Jen, do we have anybody online?
I know nobody.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Bill McDonald. I am here today, I would like to commend okay, your communications department and what's happening in your recreation department as well. Past couple of months, I've seen some amazing things happen in this community through communication. And even today with a new website that went up, I think it's an amazing thing and I would just like to say thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks, Tony. Seeing no delegations or presentations, we'll move on to reports for administration. Five point one Alberta fifty-five plus games and the twenty-four seventy-four. I see you, Hamlin.
Thank you, sir. Jen, is Alexa with us online or is Karen with us?
Hi Karen.
Sir, I'd like Karen to do something. Oh, hi Alexa. I'll have Alexa take us through this item. We're on page three of nineteen on your agenda package. This is the Alberta fifty-five plus games.
Thank you. Well, that's a.
Yep. So yeah, this this report, so this is before you, it was asked from the February ninth meeting that administration prepare a report regarding hosting the Alberta fifty-five games and bring it forward before June thirtieth. So in a nutshell, the guidelines for the hosting checklist were reviewed. There are some struggles with facilities for a community to host this. Yeah, I think that's about it really. Karen, did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, not not really. I think you guys did a thorough analysis and if we just go back to at the start when it was talked about with the town of Hinton, the town Hinton explored the possibility of hosting the twenty twenty-four Alberta Winter Games and and the scan where the regional scan was done for Hinton Jasper Edson, Yohad County with the joint bid and just the it was determined that it was a bit too risky and the good on you know, there were limited financial and community resources, so. Um, but that being said, we it was kind of just took to the ocean that currently right now the town Hinton doesn't have the facility infrastructure um, to meet their requirements to host the Alberta fifty-five plus games event on on its own there. And so I guess the option that we're just for the council to just accept this for the report for for information. And then option two being that committee direct administration to call for public volunteers interested in forming a bid committee for the twenty twenty-five Alberta fifty-five plus games. And then provide an update on the outcome and next steps at a committee of the whole meeting before August thirty-first.
Thank you, Mr. Burchard and Mr. Turner. Council, any comments, questions, directions?
Council, we're good. Yeah, I guess. Have we explored any of the possibility of doing a regional bid like we had done previously for the Alberta Winter Games? Where we essentially split events over, say, two two towns things.
Um, so I can't speak fully to that, but to my knowledge, Jasper, Edson, Hinton had come together on the possibility of hosting. Just let me double check here. It was one of the youth games recently. And right now it's just not feasible for a community as it was too risky at this time. It's not a no, just not now.
Thank you. Excellent. Council, any other comments, questions? Councilor Taylor?
To my way of thinking, what's really needed to make this feasible would be like three or four people preferably from the community that really want to volunteer and put this on that. Know that this is going to take a ton of a lot of time to put on. I just don't know that those people exist right now. If they did, then we could have something. That seems like a starting point for one of these projects.
And myself in queue. And first of all, thank you administration for the report. I mean, this was a motion direction that I suggested didn't pass or be passed it and getting some information on this and seeing the amount of work and it looks like not only that, but having some nonprofit organizations that connected to it and need of a hundred volunteers respecting the fact that, you know, volunteers are difficult to come by in such a large, large event. Bless the fact that we don't have that infrastructure and that Jasper and it's and I've said not now, so I appreciate the effort and the look into it and it just looks like it's it's not feasible for us at this current time. So appreciate that. Thank you. Council, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, always speaking for myself. Um, I think if we had a group of individuals who came forward to the town and said, hey, look, we we'd really like to explore this, give us a little bit of room to do some digging here. Um, I'd be for myself, I'd be really supportive of that. You know, infrastructure is always something we can look into if we know we have the bodies that are willing to go into something like this. And I again, I think back to the last time we had those Alberta Winter Games here, it was amazing. There was a large benefit economically and in terms of tourism to our town during that time of year when we don't typically get that. So I certainly would be supportive of that. If anybody watching or any of our citizens are talking and they say, hey, look, we'd like to dig deeper. I'd like to see that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Goo. Council? Any other questions, comments, or direction? I'm there, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I have one question for for me, the the biggest obstacle is the fact that our infrastructure doesn't meet the needs. I believe if there really will to get a hundred volunteers, I think that's actually feasible in our community, so. In an effort to, I guess, better communicate to our residents, what would be some of the infrastructure needs that are not sufficient? That sort of is highlighted within the analysis of this report.
Yeah, I can answer that. Thank you. So yeah, so the main one, so if we were going to host a winter games, we need a minimum of four arenas. Again, we could pair with other communities, so either Jasper or Edson, that does become quite cumbersome in scheduling games. Let's say an individual has a game here, they move on to the next round and that game's in Edson. That's a huge struggle with that. So ideally they require the four minimum arenas for the winter games. And for the summer games, an all-weather track. So ours is deemed as an all-weather track, but after speaking with Dave Finn, who is the president of Alberta fifty-five plus. With it being shale, it can be quite hazardous for seniors to fall on. It's quite hard. So an upgrade of that would be required as well. And then in addition, there's a certain amount of pickleball courts required. We have lots around town, but again, the scheduling would become an issue with that. So there is quite a few items in the attachment that do just that the guideline is attached on. And a few of the other ones that become tricky to schedule around.
Perfect, thank you. Council, what do we want to do with this? I'd like to move to accept the Alberta fifty-five plus games report for information. Council, any discussion? Want to speak to it?
Yeah, just to confirm with administration and fairly certain this is the way it is, if we were to get significant community interest moving away from this, there's nothing to stop us from coming back and revisiting this this topic because we're just accepting for information, right?
Certainly good. That is correct. And additionally, at the C A O level, we have discussed with the neighboring communities that if they find an interest within their community, that we will continue to hold the possibility of discussions regarding the possibility of regional cooperation of oh, something at this time, the other communities just did not feel that was appropriate.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. James. Any other want to speak to the directions? I'll call the question. The committee accept the Alberta fifty-five plus games report for information. What was in favor? This passing in. All right. Thank you, council and administration. We'll move on to our next item, which is five point two. And that is our twenty twenty-three budget process. I see you, Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope this isn't too early as as members of the community will recall during our twenty twenty-two budget process, I had committed to what I believe was a pretty significant need, which was a budget policy for the town of Hinton. My belief is based on what I experienced in other communities and seen in other communities that if council were to adopt the policy, that policy would obviously clearly direct the wishes of council in project budget preparation and delivery and would provide consistency regardless of vacancies or turnovers of key positions that we've seen affect the last two budget cycles here in town. And so I had wanted to get this going sooner rather than later, so we could start to capture the wishes of council on this matter and to bring possibly something back that council may be willing to look at and consider even for this upcoming budget cycle. I I recall and took a fair number of notes through the the last cycle that I would like to put into a proposed policy if it's the wish of council. I asked our interim director of corporate services to look around and in her opinion, find some examples that she quite liked. You do see attached the two examples we we liked as a framework. Again, you're not bound by these. They're examples. If this is anything that you feel is important, of course, that can be added. If there's things here that you go, I don't know that we need this, of course. And anything that the town may choose to adopt, you can simply delete it. I looked around, I had mentioned that I'd really like to commit to a schedule. And so the schedule that I incorporated in here that I quite liked in terms of details, I I honestly poached from the town of Hinton, but and and tried to work it into to ours. It did a good job of anticipating every four years, the electoral cycle and how that affects can affect the budget cycle. Administratively going forward, it would be my hope to see us looking at and hopefully even adopting an operating budget in December of each year, which is aggressive, I know, based on the last two years. But it is, it is ideal for us moving forward, so. There's a fair amount of information in here, which I hope that the members of the community have a chance to read. One of the other items that came up recently was a request to revisit the parking lot items through the last through the last budget process and you will do, you will see that there are six included here. So I have a bit of a discussion in there. And I guess at this point, I'm just more rather than me reading this all, you've all had a chance to review it. I guess I'm open to answer any questions or or looking to see if there's any appetite, direction on possibly bringing back a a proposed policy that council can take a look at, that administration can craft for the talent into.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor?
Just wondering why your recommendation was to accept this as information?
At this point, it's just a matter of, I mean, if you wish, you can you can provide some direction on the preparation of a policy, but at this point, I I'm more I I'm more interested on discussion that we may have and what would then populate a policy that would unfold it.
Councilman Goo and Councilman Goo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm I'm absolutely supportive of this. I I think over a number of years, this has been a high level goal, but because it's never been captured in policy. Uh, you know, it's very difficult as an organization, as an and as a council uh, to hold our feet to it, as it were, you know, and this is our schedule. This is what we do. So I think confirming it in policy is a much better way to hold this accountable to the public. I like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Goo and Councilman Goo.
Uh, one thing that I would like to see be added in here is has to do with civic agencies. And I think we should start that process way earlier, having them come in here in November gives no time for planning discussion. I would like to add that into the schedule. I like to start that in September even earlier. But if we could get them in and actually have a conversation about, you know, what they plan not only to do for the next year, but the next three years, maybe we can extend those civic agency agreements and sort of come to a a pledging agreement, my thought.
Councilor Goo, please.
Thank you, sir. And I do appreciate Councilor Goo's comment on this. Administratively, I would like to bring the civic agencies forward, particularly those that are that are operating under signed operating agreements with the town that have funded reserves. We ran into this this the first quarter of this year and those should not have to compete with other capital proposals coming from the town. When they've got reserves, they're operating consistent with the agreements with the town. I would like to bring those and consider those in advance of the of of the operating and capital budgets where we bring something that at some point prior to consideration of the final budget, and this could be worked into and I would imagine into this into this policy, but that allows council to say yes on these items. They're now not competing and causing issues for our civic partners or any other projects we may wish to bring forward. And it's much clearer and I think it'll avoid a lot of frustration with our groups. So I do appreciate that. I would envision that being in this policy.
Okay.
And just to follow up to that, I think the almost most importantly is to give those people the opportunity to 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 actually have a to have a say as relates to council, you know, to pick on him for a second. I mean, the amount of work that they do for the money we give them is a fraction if we try to do that ourselves. And just I think giving them appropriate time and and respect is important. Them and all eight civic agencies using them as example.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. And myself and then councillor Taylor. I agree with council dudes, you know, we longed for, we've had a schedule, but it's been so loose and it's administrative, but I think this is both in an ownership of council and administration working together to achieve a budget. You know, you know, this somewhere is aggressive, but ideally that would be the best, you know, for the community that we can, you know, have less time focus on budgets anytime and more on other things as well. And I definitely do agree with the civic agencies coming much earlier. Plus, it also gives other civic agencies, because we had a civic agency come to us at the last minute potentially, so it gives the other agencies potentially that that ability to apply, go through that process and maybe meet that budget to the, you know, process if they are successful. So I think that definitely, you know, in around the same time, we're getting work plans and budgets for our departments. Would be great to have those civic agencies working together, so. Okay, thank you. That's all I can say. Counselor Taylor?
I think it's important to have a budget process that identifies things that are important to each of us. We've mentioned two of those, the schedule, the civic agency timelines. Uh, but there's other things that are important like to me, like target property tax increases, like the city of Polkham has it, so you don't have to do it year after year. They suggest that it's the C P I. We could, you know, we could have something similar. And then there's some guys there, they have rules, how soon this is or to be managed. You know, so that they go to certain reserve funds, they don't get automatically respent within the department. It's a sort of contingency fund, if you like. Uh, the other thing that looked kind of important to me is reallocations and changes of forecasted budget items, how those are going to be managed. So it within sixty dollar amounts, you have certain flexibility, but if you change greater than those dollar mouse or if you change the service levels or other things, then it has to come back to council. So this so so some of these documents, I particularly like the city of Polkham, it's got some of these principles that are important to me. But I think I think we all contributed three or four ideas. What's important in this stuff? Then we've already got, say, six or five right now than we would have. And we could avoid doing some of this stuff year by year, like instead of remembering to give direction on property tax increases just automatically there for the four years, so we'll be agreed on.
It's constant to. And Michael, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, because I had the same question as councillor Taylor's first question, I believe. No, no draft policy will be coming to council at any point right now, based on the recommended action, correct?
Um.
I think it's important to realize that administration doesn't need a motion of council to bring a policy back to this to council. I committed to do this hopefully before I I were to leave. I think it's important for the town of Hinton. If I could do to counsel the ones earlier comment, yes, you mentioned holding council to to something. It also holds, it also holds new directors, new staff coming to the organization. It holds them to a process. So you may come philosophically intending to do something, but if municipality has philosophy around budget preparation, you follow that policy because that's the policy of council. And that way, and if you want to change it, but right now between now and the end of this year and the arrival, hopefully the director of corporate services, it is my intention that that director will arrive and will prepare a budget based on the policy direction of this council, not on their philosophical beliefs on how it may or may not occur. If they want to change it for twenty twenty-four, they can bind themselves up. But I I think, sir, unless council seeks a motion, or excuse me, unless the committee seeks a motion, my intent would be to try and take some of the feedback we have here today and bring something back to a future meeting of council.
So if I name Mr. Chair, that's what I I thought was kind of going on. I I would be more comfortable if council kind of set up for the twenty twenty-four budget and if we put a motion on the book that books that will be on our action pending list that will say by the first, by the end of the first quarter twenty twenty-three, that we see a draft policy that can be built in conjunction with the process that we're using in, you know, this year. But that for next year, that in twenty twenty-four budget, that we have a policy set out. And and honestly, it'll build itself as we go through this year's um, action. So for me, I'm hearing that there's an appetite for a policy. I'd like to get a motion on the books and to have a a date in early twenty twenty-three for that to come back for us to to finalize it. Oh, with respect that I I love what I C O Hamlin's doing, but let's formalize this. Uh, so that in twenty twenty-four, it's not at the not in jeopardy based on different leadership potentially. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. So, Councilor Goo.
Um, I have a question and I have a comment. So the final point here, possible tax stabilization fund. Um, always makes me nervous because that sounds like a pool of money that's sitting around waiting to help on tax situations and pools money sitting around just making me nervous. So is that in fact that is?
It is, but if you allow me, let me explain what what a what a tax stabilization fund would be. And I'm gonna, if I can, I'm gonna draw councillor Taylor's earlier comment about the about the city of Polkham. So for argument sake, if the town adopted a policy that said we are gonna, we're gonna match C P I for property tax increases. For twenty twenty-three, that might be seven percent the way this year is shaping on. Seven percent would be significant. Be significant for any community, I would argue, would be significant for the town of Hinton. What a tax stabilization fund is, and it's hard for me to to do these two examples in the same year, but if if we had a tax stabilization fund and we spent a lot of time talking about operating surpluses. So what communities will do is they'll often set up a tax stabilization fund, which is they will take either all of their operating surplus or a portion of their operating surplus. And you're right, they'll put it into this account. It's not a slush fund. It's but what it allows is if you, so coming back to my example about a seven percent tax tax increase, if you hit a year where your C P I, your rate of inflation is very high and you go, gee, you know, we've got this policy, we really want to maintain service levels, but seven percent is awfully significant. You then draw money out of your tax stabilization fund to stabilize your taxes. So you take enough money out to reduce that seven percent to five. That's what the intent of a tax stabilization fund is. Um, it's early days and in fairness, I think it it may have only been council race, it may, and I'm sorry, she's not here, but it may only have been her and I that discussed this because she had heard about it from another community. So I had put it in there. Again, those closing items for the twenty twenty-two budget considerations, I don't know, sir, I I wouldn't mind going through those because even without a a discussion on a budget policy for this year, there's some items here that I I don't want to lose track of as we start administratively to prepare the budget. One is just to keep council in the loop. Our twenty twenty-two salary compensation review is ongoing. It'll be completed here probably by the end of June, we should start to see the preliminary report. We've had a great buy-in from our member community. So we've got a hundred percent participation from the eighteen communities that it went out to. And so we'll have that information coming back. Um, we are in a negotiation here with uniform. So this is we'll have a new union agreement before the end of this year that will take effect January first of twenty twenty-three. There was some discussion and I believe we're intending to have a bit of a discussion here going forward on service level reviews. And so that's something to keep in mind because service level reviews can affect either upwards or downwards, the expenditures within any municipality. I believe it's important that and we do have some draft policies, but they haven't been looked at for a while. I think it's important for us to develop reserve policies for the various reserves here, particularly the specific or or named reserves with the talented hint and puts policies in place regarding those. And then we already touched on the item number five.
Council, Goo.
So I guess one more question I have is, I mean, if what we're taught this this policy being a tight, why do we have to wait till twenty twenty-four? And why couldn't we have this be done and and ready to roll? This upcoming year, is that too quick?
I I am open to the direction of council when when I brought this forward. I again, my background's planning and development and platters, we we do tend much like the schedule from the talent back, we we tend to poach from other municipalities. So I believe we've got some good examples to start with. And let's be honest, the majority of municipal budget processes are pretty are can be pretty similar. And so I believe we could have something. And so I believe we could have something back for the consideration of council this year that would affect the twenty twenty three budget. Because, eh, as I said, I've got some notes through the budget process. I've had a discussion with our finance people about some of the things they would like to propose and include in this, based on their experience over the last twenty four months. And I think we could bring something forward that would be potentially quite attractive to this council. Um, for the upcoming budget year, if it's the, if it's the next budget year, we can do that as well. But I would probably move it down on the priority list of the other things we're working on.
Could it be done by August?
Oh, certainly, um.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and, and if I could with that, I, I would probably look. To try and confirm and bring back to council, even in advance of that, even of the draft, I, I'd like to bring back. And maybe there's some discussion here, perhaps not, but what the schedule may look like for this year, because that's going to drive a lot of work. In behind the wall there, with administration on, on starting our work and preparing our draft. Budgets and getting them out to our teams for their input and their numbers, and then also we want to come to council to capture early on councils. Business cases of what you're looking to bring forward.
Thank you, uh, I myself and then Council Goon, um, I, I thank you, Council of War, for asking, because I'm of the same mind, I thought. You know, why not get it going for this year, uh, we, if administration's already working on it, we've got some good examples. We could get one going, that would be great for this year, especially with the, uh. You know, for services position and getting filled and stuff and giving them some direction as well. Um, I do have a couple of questions, though, in regards to the twenty twenty two budget considerations, just, just to clarify, so. On, on the second point on the new union agreement, we also are hiring a negotiator for that as well, correct?
We are, we, we have issued an R F P, we, we have received it just Monday, just yesterday, reviewed the, the submissions and. We're, uh, we shortlisted a, a couple of candidates and we'll be doing follow-up interviews.
Okay, awesome, and then the other question I have, just in regards to that list, with that service level review, um, you know, now that we've. Adopted our strategic plan, we're also going to be doing the tactical and stuff, but it talks about seeking direction on the matter to, because we have to go through our P for that as well. Um, when do you see that coming to council, uh, to get direction, is that something? That you bring to us, or we just made direction, because, uh, the reason I ask is because if we. Going into the budgets of twenty twenty three, it would be nice to have that service review done, and I'm certain that, you know, the R F P is going to take a bit of time and. You know, and then actually, so any, any advice or any direction on that from yours?
Sir, I was hoping that possibly next Wednesday, so June twenty second. We're gonna meet to roll out the strategic plan with the senior leadership team, and then the following day, we're gonna have our tactical planning session. I was hoping that with the help of a facilitator. In that Wednesday evening session, we could start to have a discussion on what the service level review might look like. Scale, scope, size, possible costs, and then the next day is part of, and in conjunction with the tactical planning, I'd like to be. Kind of putting in place the mechanisms to get that going.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that, um. Council Goon and Mayor Michaels and Council Taylor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, just in short, I would support, uh, moving forward this year. Uh, with trying, uh, you know, call it version one of this plan. And then really what that gives us the ability to, uh, to do in the next year is to sort of fine tune it. Treat it as a living document, find out what works, what doesn't work, make those changes and move forward, so that's just my feelings.
Thanks, sir, certainly, and, and to counsel, we're going to all of council, I would suggest that. The, the policy should be the living document, we should learn from each year's budget process, um. You, you do tend to put in a policy, a two-year, a three-year, or a five-year review standard. I, I would almost suggest an annual review standard, and. I don't want to overload either administration or council, I think once you get it. It might be as simple as just early on in the new year saying. How did this, how did the blast budget process go, are you happy with it? Absolutely, takes thirty seconds, you're done, or you capture a couple of things and go, okay. We're gonna make a few amendments to the policy to catch this, and we'll bring it back to council. So I think an annual review wouldn't hurt, and I think once you've got it to a point where you're happy. And satisfied with it, I don't think you'll spend a lot of time on it.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Michaels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, I'll move that committee direct. Administration. To bring back a. Draft budget policy. To a future committee of the whole meeting. Before the end of August twenty twenty two. And if I may speak to it, no, thank you for having this conversation, I kind of thought this would be within the report, like, uh, there is a huge appetite for. Counsel to get this, if we can do it sooner, I think I was being nice by, uh. Thinking later in the year, because it wasn't there, that this is a priority for our council, we want consistency. And, uh, the budget process, so we, uh, don't have to learn, uh, while deciding on the budget. Every year, which is, uh, not a, a great, uh, fun thing to do, so, uh, thank you.
Well, just got to check, Counselor Taylor, you were on the list before the directions put on, I want to speak to this. This direction now, because we already don't have a direction on the table.
Like, I wanted to clarify, uh, the, the town manager's comments from before.
Okay, can we then, let's speak to the, the motion first, and then we'll come back to that.
No problem, okay, I'm favorable.
Okay, uh, so, Counselor Stash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, now, I'm speaking in favor of the proposed direction. Uh, I feel this is an important tool that, that's been missing in the past, and again, through several of these, uh. Budget processes, it's, it's challenging to, uh. Uh, to go through a new process every year, so I think it's important that policy that covers. When and where and how, so that regardless of transition, transitions of administration or of council. There's a consistent process that's followed through every year, so I am in support, but I do have a question, though. Uh, to administration in the interim, while this draft, uh. Policy is being developed and coming to council until the draft policy is formalized. Uh, what's going to be the process for developing the twenty twenty three budget between now and the point where policy is formalized?
Thank you, sir, um, to, to the whole of the committee, um. The initial steps that administration will take is we'll prepare a bunch of documents for our managers and directors and. And departmental review, so they're going to take a look at their, essentially their service level and bring forward service levels, maintaining service levels. Um, administratively, and so we'll take into account possible increases due to cost of. Inflation, any other pressures that may cause upward migration of budget numbers or downward, depending on what the taste may be. It doesn't mean that it will be in next year's budget, we just simply started to do that and quit, if you will, almost placeholders in the budget, um. We will at the same time be seeking any possible initiatives coming forward from administration, now these initiatives can be based on. Ideas, things coming forward, I mean, we do tend to put a fair number of things on the table that. If I'm being candid, council never sees, uh, simply because we're not going to bring in. Ten percent budget increase to council before you do them look at it, so we start to have some of those preliminary internal business case discussions. And we can start to pair some of those out or prioritize some of those going forward. Um, early on as well, we will start to, and I don't think we've done a good job in this, and in fairness, I haven't been here for the last two. But we need to be coming. Two-fold, one is, and we heard it earlier, the civic agencies and engaging the civic agencies. But also the business cases coming or potentially coming from council, and what some of council's business cases are. So we start to capture and do the necessary research on those going forward, so, um. These are, these are all just processes that need to occur. But what the policy will give us is clear direction on how that's going to be done consistently going forward, so. The reason I suggest that I would want to do this is, if we wait. To prepare a policy, bring a draft to council, get the feedback on that, bring that back to council. Then we missed the opportunity to get a, an appropriate, I don't even want to say an early start, I just want to say an appropriate start on the twenty twenty three budget. Process, so we'll start that and we'll catch up with the policy, this might be.
Well, Mr. Chair, in terms of timelines and, uh, check-ins. Would something along the lines of the example annual schedule be followed from here until we have our own policy in place?
If that were something that, that the committee. And again, this is, it's just an example, but if generally this hits the mark for the committee. I would, I'd have no issue with trying to do that, again, the reason I'm comfortable with this is it mirrors a lot of communities I've worked with in the past. And allows us that timeline, so that we're not, hope, so we're hopefully not into February or March or April of next year.
If I could follow, yeah, there's something, timelines, something along the lines of the example annual, annual schedule. Is something that I would support having following until we have our own policy in place. One of the challenges that I've faced on the councils that I've been on in terms of budget preparation. Is the fact that we're not involved in the process all until it gets presented to us. In September, October, whatever it is that we see the initial draft budget, and at that time, it's always a surprise, always a shock, so we could. Be, you know, in the loop a little bit between or prior to that, that would definitely help, and I think it would, uh. Make for a more positive and productive, uh, budget process, so I would be fully in support of something like that until we have our own policy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir, and to that comment, I, I would just point out, and, and again, based on my experience of others, the second check-in point. Reads council service review input, so that is that opportunity, and that's coming forward, proposed in July. So it's, it's, it's trying to capture the direction of council on new initiatives, major initiatives, changes in service levels. Or initiatives, so that we can be preparing those budget implications and not at the last minute.
Thank you, Counselor Stash, I could myself, but I'll be in favor of this, um, you know, but I do agree with Counselor Stashic having some. Input there, and that's why my question earlier too, because that service level, if we are going to change it, and it's happening. Potentially in July, having that review beforehand would be great, because then we have something to work with that we don't have. Uh, honestly, I mean, I know we have a high level one, but this review is going to dig deep into the services and understand them more, so. I mean, granted, I realize sometimes we push a little bit, but this, I think, is important to have. In my opinion, before we even have that conversation, uh, and it would also give, I think. Uh, administration sometime, because putting together their service levels, if we want to change it, or we learn more about it, so. You know, that's where I think that teers a lot on, on that, uh, that, that direction, and I hope to get that, thanks. Thank you. Counselor Taylor, this.
I think, I don't know, council has an appetite for this, that some sort of discussion with council. On what the targeted property tax increases like, look like for the next year would be a useful u- utility. Where would that fit, when would that, when could that occur, so that one disrupt things too much? Or is council even interested in that? He, sir, if I could maybe the first half of that question, um. I would suggest, in the year we're currently experiencing sooner rather than later, and then why I'm saying that is, is in. Inflation C P I is, is running. Six to seven percent plus this year, um. And a really basic way to look at your budget, much like the city of La Col. Is if you want to maintain service levels for twenty twenty three, that translates to a six to seven percent tax increase, so. If, if, if. The philosophical discussion of council is to maintain. Tax, property tax increases at a percentage lower than that, or potentially much lower than that. That's going to translate to some fairly, potentially fairly significant budget cuts to maintain. Like our, maintain our position against inflation. Second part would be a council, like is, is having a discussion about potential property tax options for the budget that's getting prepared, uh. Do you like to have a discussion on that, or you just want to? Let administration go out or?
I guess, I guess I have the, if I may. Not sure if this particular conversation reflects to the direction. Um, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against having a conversation about it, but it's not, the direction right now is to go forward with the policy. Um, so I'm not sure if right now is the right time to have that conversation, I think we can focus on the direction first. And then you're welcome to bring that up afterwards, and that conversation, but that's good, that's good, yeah. Counsel, any other, I guess, discussion on the direction, uh, Miss Kennedy, we, we can. See that again, we have the current direction of direct administration, bring back the draft. Budget policy to the future committee, the whole meeting before the end of August twenty twenty two, is there any other? Conversation, questions in regards to this direction? All right, then we'll, uh, call to question, uh, the committee direct administration to bring back draft budget policy to a future committee of the whole meeting. Before the end of August twenty twenty two, council, all of us in favor? And that is carried unanimous. Right, um, the council, you knew, you had your hand up to.
No, all with jaw, thank you.
So Counselor Taylor, you had, uh, were in the queue prior to the direction, you had said some clarification that I see with handling that, and then. Did you say we started negotiations with the, uh?
We have not started, we are, we are preparing negotiations with the. Okay, that's. The fairness to the union, they have not yet gone to type us. Okay, Mr. Anderson, thanks.
So council, um, there is another part of this, of this, uh, report, and that's in regards to the parking lot. Uh, we haven't talked about that at this point, so I don't know if there's any appetites, uh, for. Uh, these were parking lot items that came out of the twenty twenty two budget discussions, uh, they got highlighted, so. Is there any questions or comments on, on that, on page seven? I know I have a couple behind. And Counselor Stash.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I apologize, if you have any, uh, comments directly related to that.
Okay.
But, um, earlier I did. Put my hand up, and it was just to remind council that we've, uh, proposed direction on the table. And that we should deal with that before discussing other matters, but I do want to go back to what Counselor Taylor was talking about earlier, and maybe we could talk around that a little bit.
Go ahead, or do you have?
I just wanted to, uh, bring that back forward, so that we can, uh, can talk, because there did seem to be some update to talk about that.
Okay, uh, Counselor Taylor, do you want to speak more to, or you've already talked about the?
Well, I, I just, I just think it's useful for us to have a discussion. About, uh, budget options, that what we expect to see for next year. You know, what we would like to see to give to administration. You know, it could be seven, three and a half percent, whatever, it could be, it could be C P I, half C P I, C P I plus fifty percent. At least have that discussion to see if we want to give direction to administration relatively early on. That's, I think that's a useful thing to do, okay, I, if anybody else agrees, that can be worthwhile knowing, and then. Maybe we could set a time to talk about it.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor, uh, Counselor Goon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I, I fully agree, I think, uh. The last couple, well, not this past one, but previous to that, there were a couple of budgets where I, I had brought that up. Because we had done that in our past councils, and I had always found that that was a good starting place. Because it gave administration sort of a, a rough idea of where council had some. Political appetite to start that budgeting process off, because. I don't know, if I was in administration and, and they said, well, go and construct a budget. You know, when they brought back a, say, a six percent increased budget, and council said, well, what are you thinking about? We actually want a two percent decrease, well, then, we just wasted a whole bunch of our time. I, I don't think that's a, can you do, I, I don't think that's a productive relationship. I think getting the ballpark right is a good starting place, and we can always find.
Thank you, Counselor Goon, uh, myself and then Counselor Stashic, um. I'm not against having a conversation, I think, to someplace to start, the only thing that I think for me. Um, is early on, though, in the budget hearing from administration, whether or not. It's even feasible or not, um, you know, like, where are we sitting in their budget discussions, because we're. I don't want to handcuff, you know, either. I don't wanna handcuff, you know, either. I mean, it's, we're throwing out a number, but without knowing a lot of details of it. And so I just, as long as there's an open communication that, you know, I know the council said this, but, you know, these are. This is what's happening behind the scenes. We're trying to shoot for, keep hitting this. Any, any discussion around that, I think, early on, so that we're part of that process. Because we are, because I think it's the same thing. That's a surprise, too, when we come back. And I think it's a bit of a frustration on the administration side as well, and I want this to flow, uh, well. Uh, we've had some, you know, pickup, so, uh, that's the only thing that I, I, uh, you know. Bring to the table is, you know, not necessarily being said in stone all the time, because we just, I mean, as you said, the inflation is moving up and up, we don't know what's gonna happen. It it seems to be changing, you know, week by week. So those are my thoughts, uh, Counselor Stashik.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, yeah, I, I think it's important that council sets a target for administration to try and shoot for. There's been, as Counselor Moon said, there's been occasions in the past where council has hasn't given that target, and then the budget, you know, the draft budget that's come back to council for consideration has been. Quite surprised to. So I think that putting something out there is important. My suggestion, something I would be comfortable with, is that the, uh, the, the starting. Target would be CPI. I think that's a reasonable target. It ensures that, uh. Inflation is taken into consideration, so theoretically. Uh, any current service level should be able to be maintained if the target is CP. And then, of course, there can be additional discussion about, uh, whether it needs to be higher than that because of whatever extenuating circumstances are. Facing the community or net does potentially have to be that high, because there's some, some benefits that, uh, community sees, so. But I think that's a good starting point, because it ensures a, a level playing field moving forward.
Thanks, thank you, Counselor Stashik, Mayor Michaels.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um. Share similar thoughts to Counselor Stashik. The only, um, difference for, for me. If we're going to, I don't know how this conversation is gonna go for the twenty twenty-three budget and what we're gonna. Leave off from this meeting, but for me, it's CPI is is part of it, but a lot of our budget is, uh, is is set with the, uh. Our salaries. So our salaries aren't affected by CPI. The purchasing of goods is affected by CPI. So for me, I would like. Something that's CPI or let's say four percent in whichever is less. As, as the point, because CPI, let's say in a year like this, that's six point seven. I don't know if I wanna see a six point seven percent budget, because our cost per salaries, uh, are below six point seven, and they play a portion of it. So to me. A budget starting point should be a fraction of what the CPI is. And maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way, but that's sort of my rationale that I'd want the lesser of the two, then we kinda go from there. Um, are my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels, uh, Council of the Mark and then Council Two.
Well, I think the, uh, the thing for me is, uh. To move away from this discussion of the tax increase being CPI and start talking with spending increases. Because as we learned last year, a three percent tax increase, actually, we're spending like almost nine percent more. Than we were in the previous year. And, um. If, so I think the, I think we need to take all the reserves out of there, we need to take, those are financing options. And once we understand where we are from a fiscal perspective, let's talk about what we're spending. That tax increase is part of it, as we learned last year. Um, so I, I think, uh, I would rather have us target. Spending as opposed to tax increases as it relates to to move forward. And to take what Counselor Stashik said, I think that's a, that's an important starting point, because then. You're gonna consider all of those things in that bigger package of spending, uh, when you move toward it. Uh, and I think, uh, that way, it's clearer, uh, where we're headed, because once we build those costs into that capital structure. They're in there forever, and the increase is on that for every subsequent year after. I just think that's a, that's an important improvement.
Thanks. Counselor Two.
Um, okay, I kind of agree with you, but, uh, I wasn't actually suggesting that we talk about it in too much detail now. Because I haven't had a chance to go and talk to a bunch of people in the community about it. I mean, I was just tentatively thinking, you know, CPI, maybe half CPI, or whatever this is, and I agree with you. Control, suspended treasury, full tax increases. I was hoping we could set a date. Close to the future, to go collect some input from some of the people we all talked to, we could bring all that in, but here. And then we could talk to it in a more important manner after talking to a bunch of businesses, a bunch of citizens, and see what they say.
Thank you. Uh, I saw I see you handling's handle up in the Counselor Stashik.
If I could, and just hearing some of the members of the committee, if you could go back to the example annual schedule, um. If that very first strategic planning session, that's the first item in the schedule. In my experience in other communities, that's often been the chance for council to in essence charge administration. We, we believe the economy is strong. We, we believe that we wanna have a very ambitious budget this year. Um, please bring us a budget with possible spending increases of X to Y. Um, or we believe. That we're headed towards recession, that austerity is more appropriate. We really believe that as you go through now this budget process. That we keep spending in check and and we really try not exceed A to B in spending this year. Um, that's usually the first item, and it allows us to proceed, and I heard this a lot, with with some fairly. If you're not, we're not looking, and I'm not asking council to paint yourselves into a corner, but. Some high-level philosophical statements about what the following year's budget might look like in terms of spending. And then we work through the various other steps in the budget cycle till you get to the service level review. And we can call these whatever these want. This is just what the town of Bath calls it. But when you come back at the service level review, you've had a chance to take a look at proposed. Operating cases, both of administration and council, your civic agencies have been engaged. You've now got a much better sense of what your spending may look like for the coming year. Have we aligned with the original direction of council, or are we way off? And hopefully administratively, we're not way off base. But it's at this point that. And again, I'm throwing all the scenarios, and sorry, it's all hypothetical, but. You, you, maybe you reach this point in, in November, and you go, you know what? I know we gave you a really austere mandate. But the economy's picked up and and it looks a lot better. So, you know, I think we're comfortable with some of these other. Additional business cases that I'm afraid administration is gonna drop off the table to keep kind of the spending under control or vice versa. Uh, in my mind, that gives you kind of four months to be working through this from the original mandate. To a little clear idea what the following year might look like. With, and if I could, without necessarily at the first step committing to a five percent. Tax increase. And then suddenly getting later in the year, and it's a ten percent. Keep it, I do agree, keep it around spending and. Give yourselves that ability as you move to finalize it in November, December, to digest everything that hopefully we've presented. And has been considered in the preceding four months, that when you get to November, December, and we start to look at bringing the finalized budget forward. That you're comfortable with the process thus far.
Counselor Stashik.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, one of the things that I wholeheartedly agree with what Counselor Bear said is about, uh. Not muddying the waters with considering a budget that's got, you know, transfers from accumulated surplus to help offset expenditures and. And reserve transfers, and I think it needs to be. Uh, clear what the changes are in spending, and that's what needs to be considered. And to stop focusing so much on what the tax percentage increase impact is gonna be. So. I, I think that needs to be something that administration goes with moving forward for this year, and I think should potentially form part of the policy, too. Um, I think that's an important consideration is to talk about, you know, if, if the target is. Then it, then it's, it's a spending increase of CPI, not a spending increase of CPI. In conjunction with transfers from accumulated surplus and transfers from reserves. Money in, money out of reserves that muddies the whole water and makes it a really. Difficult to understand picture of where finance is actually set and what the actual impact is gonna be. On reserves and money that's available and taxes all at the same time. So. I, I think that's something important to consider moving forward, and I think we should try and make sure that that's. That's something we're adhering to when we're developing these budgets moving forward. Thanks.
So if I can kind of clarify, it sounds like there's consensus, we wanna have this conversation. It's just whether or not, you know, when are we gonna have it? So. I hear Counselor, I see you handling, you said, when was the potential? Uh. You said sometime in June or?
Well, this speaks to a strategic planning session review, and I know we're in June and and we're actually. Into the strategic planning session even next week with administration, but I would foresee. Having a, even just a bit of a discussion philosophically on what the twenty twenty-three budget looks like. Um, I, I appreciate, we don't have the details yet for you. You've not, as I heard from, from Counselor Taylor, you've not had a chance to talk to your constituents, go out and, and kind of get that feedback, but. There is honestly nothing more frustrating administratively. Than working on what you believe to be the direction of council, preparing, uh, an X percent increase. And then come to council and have your council look at you and go, what were you thinking? Like, there's no way we can support this. It's wasting your time, it's wasting administration's time, it frustrates the residents in the community that's watching the process. So. Um. If we, like, I don't know that that first step needs to be terribly complicated, it is that high-level philosophical discussion. On what we think the spending should be for twenty twenty-three. And then we, and that's something we start to aim, where it doesn't mean, again, it's not cast in stone, it's not something that can't change. But it helps us to guide and direct. What we're doing administratively, administratively, as we prepare business cases and and help councils to start preparing your business cases as well.
So if I may to finish, I thought that I guess, would it be safe that? We now as a agenda prep committee know that this is the appetite of council, we could discuss in the agenda prep to kind of. Get it into the meeting, you know, in the next few weeks anyway. Um, but that's just my thought. So, uh, Counselor Taylor, so you're gonna go up?
Yeah, or we could just make a motion, you know, counsel to have a discussion at the. Whatever date to committee the whole meeting regarding, uh, targeted expenditure increases to the two thousand twenty, twenty-three budget.
Good motion.
I can't remember what I said. Well, I can put that up if you want.
Yeah, it does, it's.
I think it's important enough to actually gather and writing in a motion that, I don't know what the date is, you know, the date. Okay, so council to have a discussion. At the, uh. Council have a discussion at the blank, 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 we haven't picked the date, uh, cow be. Regarding targeted expenditure increases. For the, uh, twenty twenty-three budget.
Sir, if I could suggest the June twenty eighth meeting.
And the suggestion was June twenty eighth. Counselor Taylor, if you could take a look and. See if that captures.
Yeah. We're very targeted. Yes, thank you.
All right, so council, we have a direction, any, uh, questions, comments, Mayor, Mayor Michaels?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair, um. I, I support this in principle for sure. My question, I guess, to council, perhaps administration, what is? Is this purely, uh, a discussion item with no supporting documents, or do we wanna direct administration to have? Something to guide us to have a better conversation on the twenty eighth, the way it's worded now, I suspect that it's us re-sitting here with. After talking to the public, but then struggling to put forward directions or things to focus or decide on. So that's my only question. Is there something more robust that we can direct administration to prepare that conversation? Thanks.
So guess, I see you handling. What would come into with your suggestion on the twenty eighth? What would come from administration, anything with this direction?
Um. I, I would hope to bring. Some really preliminary research about. Projections for the coming year, so anticipated CPI rates to year end. Um, possibly a bit of a discussion, although I would want to go in camera on some thoughts around the, uh, the union. And the possible agreement, and and I can share with you some of the preliminary numbers we've brought from recent settlements across the province. It, you know, so that starts to, council prepare on, on what is gonna be anticipated and some things that are only. Partially or entirely out of our control, um. And how that can help to influence this. So I, I wouldn't. I, I think it's definitely a discussion item, but I think we would want to, I would want to try and bring some, some research to it that. Can at least inform that discussion. I don't know that I would. I don't know that it's appropriate for me or for staff to bring a recommendation other than. That, that council, you know, council provide direction on. Possible or potentials, what possible or potential spending increases for the twenty twenty-three budget may look like.
Thank you.
Thank you. They, I'm good for now.
Okay, council, any other? Questions with the direction? Comments?
Well, I guess I'll make my comment based on what I see handling that has already said is that. Uh, there's gonna be the opportunity as we move through this process to sort of even address that number, if we come up with a number, and I think that's a smart way to take a look at it. But, I mean, I don't know that this initial push needs to be, you know, hugely scientific to nail down the number. In July of what we're gonna do in January. I think there's some latitude in the scheduling that we're talking about. I think setting down abroad, I, I don't think we should. Have this be too scientific day one, that's my side. I think we can move toward the number we have that way.
Thank you. Counsel, any other? Oh, I see, I'm thinking.
In fact, if I could just to that, my, my recommendation is, is when the committee. Possibly considers a, uh, a motion. I would recommend a range. Like rather than say three percent, and then you don't hit three percent, a range is something that administration can work.
Like zero to three.
Yeah, well, no, but exactly, because it, unfortunately, sometimes if we put out. From a government perspective, we put out three percent, and then we don't hit three percent. It doesn't matter how we might preface that at the beginning, it's gonna be three percent to certain few. Whereas if it's a range and we're close to the range, one side or the other, it's still a range, the response is still a range. And we will finalize that, or we should be contemplating finalizing that when we get later in this budget calendar later in the year. And we'll have four, five more months of experience to say. I think the range was accurate, or you know what? I think we missed it on the range a little bit. We either need to increase or decrease spending.
Great, council? Hold the question then? Great, the council have a discussion at the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, committee of the whole meeting regarding. Targeted spending increases for the twenty twenty-three budget process. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. All right, uh, council, any other discussion on five point two, twenty twenty-three budget process? All right, so we're gonna move on then, uh, to council reporting. Right, yes, to council reporting, so I'm gonna start with Counselor Stashik.
Oh, uh. Yesterday, myself and a few other people. Yesterday, myself and a few other people were at the Community Futures West. And lemonade day, lemonade tasting events. Let's sample all of the, uh, different lemonades from the, uh, competitors who are putting forward their. Their creative lemonade and chose winner. I don't, I'm not sure we can say who the winner is yet. Uh, yeah, I think so. We'll, we'll hold on to that, we'll wait for the official announcement. So that was in terms of the, uh, the lemonade recipes and the tasting of it. But there is, uh, two more components to that, and that is judging of the lemonade stance and the, uh, entrepreneurship of the individuals. So, uh, invitation to the community council to administration, anybody wants to come up. There's going to be five stances out in the community on this coming Saturday. That's the eighteenth, so there will be Viperlicious Lemonade, there'll be a Big Rock Dodge. Sweet and Sour will be at the Hinton Brick, Powerful Lemonade will be at Home Hardware. Real Canadian Lemonade will be at Canadian Tire and Powell Lemonade will be at Fox Creek. Sorry, Fox Creek Developments, and I believe they are open from ten until. Unless they get cold, then it'll be ten till whatever. Two P M. If you happen to be around any of those places or all of them. I'm open, sample the wares, buy some lemonade and meet some young future entrepreneurs. Uh, the other news from, uh, Community Futures is that, uh, Community Futures is. Part of the new provincial initiative, giving women entrepreneurs easy access to capital to start or grow their business in the local community. So women entrepreneurs will be able to apply for unsecured, conditionally repayable loans ranging from ten thousand to seventy-five thousand. Can be used for operating capital equipment, leasehold improvements, inventory, you know, on their salaries and everything. So if anybody wants more information on that, they can visit, uh, westyellowhead dot Alberta C F dot com. And you can find your way there through the, to the Capital Growth Initiative. And that's all I've got. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Stashik.
Uh, Counselor Taylor.
Nothing.
Mayor Michaels.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I had the privilege, Counselor Stashik spoke too, so I'm looking forward to Saturday. I was able to attend prom with, uh, well, three fellow counselors for different reasons. So that's always great to see our kids from Harry College, specifically for that one. Uh, enjoy their evening. I was able to attend, uh, many events for seniors. Week was a great, amazing turnout for our community. One example of the Bridges turnout was seventy-eight people in one room for that, one of many, many events. That generally garners maybe like, you know, twenty to forty, but seventy-eight was packed, it was great. Went to the Dunk Tank at Pine Valley Lodge, uh, did my part, uh, one thing. That swimsuit, uh, I'm taking orders if anyone wants to buy something, it's great. So I, I disagree wholeheartedly with that. And, uh, yeah, it was just great to spend time with seniors and, and, uh, thank Randy Smith for also, uh, participating in the Dunk Tank. And there was one more event that I cannot remember at this time. That's all for me. Because it's such a short meeting, my brain is not.
Right, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, uh, the same as several other counselors, I was very honored to attend prom with both hats. The other thing is that tomorrow I'm scheduled with the mayor and I'm not sure which other counselors. Uh, we're going to be meeting with our Protective Services Department and some members of the community. Just to go over some community concerns and how those can be addressed. I'm looking forward to that meeting very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor New, Councilor Bar.
Um, well, and I know we're supposed to keep the, the personal to a minimum, but I did last week have the opportunity to go to Mamma Mia. And man, I'm telling you, we have a talented community. Get up and act in front of your community is a challenge, but to get up and sing, and they killed, it was awesome. Uh, I too had the opportunity to attend prom, um, and it's always fun to watch. The graduates, uh, they're so proud and they look so good in their suits and running shoes. The, the tasting for lemonade day went, uh, better this year because they were all really good, the lemonade. So it was a tough choice. Uh, and then yesterday I did have the opportunity to, um, attend the Frag meeting. Uh, and, uh, a very technical, um, uh, presentation about, uh. Uh, fires that, uh, I struggled to understand, but, uh. Uh, it was my first one, so, um, I'm ready for next time. Thank you for speaking.
Uh, for myself, uh, I was at, uh, to prom as well for Harry College. I was, uh, celebrating my daughter's graduation or prom, so it was nice, but it was great. It was a really good evening. It was well organized, uh, thanks to the school and all the staff there, uh, the committee and, and also total volunteers, parent volunteers. You know, it was a great evening, the food was phenomenal. Steco did a phenomenal job with their catering and the service that they provided was outstanding. So. That's not all I had. Oh, I did do, did seniors events as well. Took in a couple of the, uh, technology and went to the, the breakfast or the lunch at the Legion, it was packed. There was a lot of people there, uh, I think they almost ran out of food too.
Three meals, seniors.
Yeah, it was well, and, uh, you know, and other my other hat, I had my own session. And had a great turnout there too, almost fifty people. So it was really, you know, really well attended and good on Randy and his team down there for that as well. I do have a question to Counselor McGee to, uh, to the, uh, meeting you said that's happening for. Was that just for the, the policing committee to be part of, or is it for, uh, others to attend as well?
Um, I, I certainly think others could attend, absolutely. I know, speaking with, uh, Ms. Lefrancois. She's just trying to generate some community awareness and interest and I, Mac was good enough to, uh, volunteer his time to come out and. Hear out some of her concerns and ideas, uh, as, as was the mayor. So if, if anybody else is interested. Four, four P M. Yeah, four P M. So if anybody else is interested, I know she'd be, she'd be happy to have extra, extra folks along.
And it's here.
Uh, we're going to meet here. Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you, Counselor McGee.
You bet.
Uh, that's all I have to report. Um, so on to Chief Administrative Officer, I C O Hamlin.
Thank you, sir. Um. Yeah, it's been interesting. Had, had a chance with our good friends from Par nine nine nine, Par triple nine. Had an opportunity to meet with representatives from Nate, so they're in preliminary discussions with Nate. To try and address some of the academic aspects, uh, acts, aspects of their proposal. And so that was quite interesting, quite exciting to meet with them and just the possibilities that may be here in Hinton, uh, for that partnership. Uh, later in the day, uh, Amir had another group, uh, join us with an international vacation rental company. Out of the Pacific Rim that's very interested in emerging markets in North America, including Jasper. And the Jasper Hinton area or for that, so like, he's, uh. If I'm looking for an active guy, he's, uh, he's got some skills. So, uh, that, that was, that was exciting and glad to be involved in, in both of those yesterday. Would like to report to count to the committee that's, uh, able to complete a very, a very packed, a very productive two day workshop. With Wes Fraser last Thursday, Friday, and so we believe a strong path forward, uh, preliminarily with them. Around the water and wastewater here in the town of Hinton. Uh, yesterday finished the final interview of Director of Corporate Services. And now just, uh, considering and reviewing those, those individuals and see if there may be an opportunity to move forward with a. With, with a, uh, an offer, and so glad we were able to interview that many. Last, uh, I think it was last week, uh, the mayor and I had a chance to meet with, uh, some representatives from, uh. Stars and regarding the possibility that helipad, uh, development of the helipad in an appropriate location is a good area. Of course, there's real significant benefits to stars and to emergency services in general. If, uh, if something like that could be facilitated, there's lots of challenges around approach angles. Lots of things I was not aware of until that meeting. And so we'll be working with them hopefully moving forward with, uh, possible partnerships in the Hinton area. And, uh, perhaps just, uh, administrative about the, to the members of the committee. I sent out an email a little earlier, there's been a fair bit of discussion and concern regarding the preliminary award of the Restore Grant. I, I will just follow up and let everybody know that, uh, administration has responded back to the province. And I, I believe we will see that, uh, number increased. But I will let council know when to follow up, enter the, or to follow up email hopefully, uh, early next week. So that matter has not been dropped by administration, we continue to pursue it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, council, any questions for I C O Hamlin, this report? I just have one on recruitment, uh, we were updated at Ledge. Does it, the services was, there was a possible candidate, has that been successful or?
Uh, unfortunately it was not, so I, I will, uh, they, they did turn down the offer and, uh. The, the difficulty with the legislative services clerk position is quite frankly, the amount that we are able to pay to secure the skillset desired. So I am currently, uh, reviewing and updating. We do have two vacancies, one pending, but we've got the Strategic Services Manager position, which the legislative clerk reports to. And so I'm reviewing both job descriptions and I'm looking to elevate the legislative portion to the managerial level. So I can pay a bit more and I believe that it's appropriate in the, uh, job description. So I'm working with the H R manager to get that updated so we can go back, well, go to market on the clerk position. And get out to market on the, uh, back manager position.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Counselor, Counselor, I don't know if I can ask this, but I'll try. What's the status of our playing field and the, uh, playing field and the condition of the playing field? Um, if I could, I'll, I'll respond. I, I had intended to respond to council and to the email chain around there. I will share, I, I did do an inspection of that playing field this afternoon. Uh, it was a follow-up to an inspection I did about six weeks ago. And if council, if the committee will accept it at this time, I believe there's no issue at all with the playing field. I believe it's in fine shape. The, the bits of paper and, and so forth, unless I'm going to have staff down there on their knees, which means picking it up. Um, I'm not entirely sure what more we would do at this time. So, um, I'm satisfied with it and, uh, if it's problematic going forward, then my suggestion is. That administratively, we have to look for a different location for fireworks in the future. There's been a lot of work to clean up the fireworks from last year. And, uh, I'm not convinced there's more that we would be able to do, short of literally. Picking every piece of paper up by hand. It, it was raked, it was mowed, it was raked, it was vacuumed, it was mowed again. So, uh, hon- honestly, I think it needs to be treated more than anything. It's a lot of ambulance right now.
Thanks. All right, uh, so council, we do have one item in closed session. So if we could have a motion or a direction.
I think Mr. Chair wanted to go in to closed session.
All right, thank you.